We all set Peg to start?
I am.
Okay. This is a meeting of the City Council of East Hampton Finance Committee. It's being recorded. And we're allowed to do so through the open meeting law. Allowance from the governor to have remote meetings. At this time, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand using the. Raise your hand. Allowance in the participation menu. And I will call on you, but stay muted until your call done. First, we'll start with the approval of minutes since Council Lynch is unable to make this meeting. I'm going to defer minutes to the next meeting. Is that okay with you, Council Coniff?
Yes.
Okay. The mayor is not here. I thought she'd be here, so we won't have mayor communication. Public speak. I think most of you are here from City Space and I will allow you to speak to the Old Town Hall. Item that's on the CPA, I mean on our agenda, but if you're here for any other reason. You should speak now during public speak. I don't see any hands. I'm going to move on. So let's get right to it. The first item on the new business is a CPA appropriation. Request of $500,000. I will share the screen and show you. Peg, I'm going to make you a co-host if that's all right?
Yep.
You could admit people.
Sure.
So. Both of these CPA. Items that are on your agenda were approved in. The spring. I deferred them going to the city council because we were about to do major. Meetings on the budget. And these didn't have that kind of urgency. So now they're in front of us when we have time to speak about them. The first one up is a CPA request from City Space. A little history here. City Space had requested originally that we look at perhaps bonding early for their project. But the finance team at the city. Decided that that would be difficult, if not impossible, to do too early. And the auditor recommended that we start. Change our what are called earmarks into an actual account. For what she called and renamed retained city match. And that was what. The CPA committee decided to do was to start. Was to move money into an account which would require the city council's approval. And this allowed. All it really is is accounting in that we're moving money from. In our accounts. I'm trying to bring it up. This is our account. Can you see this, everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Is it full? Or do you need?
We can see to column H.
Now, how about oh? Okay. So what we're getting at. This new account was created at the but when we did our budget hearings and I'm going to try and get to it so I can show you where it is. I'm sorry. This is the wrong thing. My apologies. No, that's not it either. I can't believe it. I had it up. I apologize. Give me a little, a minute.
Dan, are you trying to find the account balances?
Yeah, I have it. There we are. Do you guys have this now?
Yep.
Okay. Can you see the whole thing?
Well, the top half, the top third.
Okay. The yellow highlights are mine. This, this is the account we're talking about, the Old Town Hall, second floor. Retained city match account. When we did the budget, we put 250,000 in this peg. As the beginning of this account. This account was appropriated and approved by the city council. And what we're going, what the CPA committee is asking now is these earmarks here. And here, which really aren't. As strong as a, as a real account along with this appropriation would be moved into this account. That's what this is doing. This request before us. The city council votes on it. And then we would have 750,000 retained. In the account. For our city match to the bonding whenever we get to it. Our goal is to get up to a million dollars, maybe more in this account to reduce the amount of bonding we need, obviously saving a tremendous amount on interest. The goal of City Space was to demonstrate using this kind of an account. To anyone who is, and I'll let Burns and the City Space people speak to this. But to demonstrate to anyone who might want to donate or to. Grant associations that there is a very strong commitment. And that this particular account having been funded by the city council. And. Has more strength than just the earmarks and the promises, whereas this is an actual savings account. This account can't be used for construction and the city council and the CPA committee must vote to move the money out of this account. And. What else did I want to say? The other thing that this demonstrates, as you see, every year we've put 200, 200, 250 into the account. We are demonstrating that we can do have sufficient money for other projects. This is the balance. After everything that's been committed. In our account exists. We have this still almost a million dollars left. And that even though we're moving 250,000 yearly into this account. Or that we're going to have to use that much to pay for a bond. It does not mean that we can't afford other projects. So I'm happy that that's a kind of an element of this peg that I think is important to see.
Yep.
So that's generally the thing and you can see down here that Jamie has this budget. Demonstration. We have the $300,000 which we approved for rental assistance, the $36,000 for the open space and recreation. This city match 750, she's showing that. Because the CPA committee has voted it in. It doesn't actually get moved to this account unless the city council votes it in. And of course, the 9,900 for the historic records, which we're going to speak to tonight. All of that being said, I'd like to. First of all, Jamie, is there anything you want to say about this budget before I turn it over to City Space?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the, the undesigned fund balance. Is, these are my estimates and they're not money. I didn't have a full update prior to generating this. It's my best guess of what the undesigned fund balance should be. I think it's actually. Maybe 10 or $20,000 higher than what. The auditor might have for that account, but these numbers were. Just my, I think it's my best guess.
To meet with Val and just resolve any discrepancies in this. But I asked her to give me this because it updates us. Showing the earmark, showing the new budget, these new budget figures that were approved in June. So now I'll turn it over to any. I'm going to stop this here. And I'll turn it over to, I'm going to turn it over to Burns Maxi. Do you have anything you want to add to this?
Sure, yeah. You know, as you said, Dan, this, this is really important for us. With the CPA funding mark for this project and the secured city account only accessible to City Space once we have the funding in place. This move will really offer further incentives to funders to support this project. As well as securing match funding from the MCC. So it's, it's really important as we move forward. And as we've seen in the past with East Hampton and, you know, when it's in a downturn, we've seen really economic resiliency because of the arts. And we're expecting, you know, during. What we're experiencing right now during these challenging times that there will be really a lot of need, not just for celebration, once we get out of this moment. But as well as economic development for the city of East Hampton. And we really want Old Town Hall to be ready, to be ready to open up once we're through this pandemic and. Ready to invite people into this space and to come out and spend money within our city. So we're obviously on board with this and excited to see the next steps happen. And our funders and current funders and future funders are really depending on this commitment. Coming through from the finance committee and the CPA. It makes a difference. And I hope that the finance committee and the city council are in agreement as well.
Can I ask a question?
Please do.
So this, can you see the screen that Dan has up right now?
Yeah.
So am I looking at the, so 6.6 million is what it's going to take?
That, that was what it was going to take before the pandemic. So something that we have done is during this timeline of, or since March, we've done a number of things. Within City Space. One is to adjust our timeline. So we were on a really good trajectory. To build out on what we had originally expected, but when the shutdown happened. We realized that we needed to pause. We did a number of things. We've suspended our, the rents of our tenants. But we continued to plan ahead for the capital campaign. One of the things that we've done is we've hired a campaign manager. We've been planning for the timeline to move it forward to 2022. So that'll increase inflation costs because we won't be able to actually start building out through 2023. But this kind, this aligns with what we think is feasible as well as it works with the bonding possibilities with the city.
Okay. And, and the $750,000 from the CPA. Where does that hit on here? Does that fall under construction and renovation? Is that the line item that you would apply those funds to, that top line item?
So the, the commitment from the city can only go towards construction.
Okay.
Renovation. The extras like theater equipment. And operations, endowment, it can't go towards, it can, just to clarify, architect fees. It would not go to campaign cost or tax credits.
Okay. And, and the money that you have in escrow or wherever you have it. Is it? Is it in a, in a safe investment scenario where, do you just have it sitting in a bank or are you? Like, how are you making sure that it works for you or can you, even in an event like this, do you have to keep it really safe?
Absolutely. You know, and I'll, I'll let Mike Tausnick speak a little to that, but just to give you a little bit of context on the campaign itself. You know, we really launched the campaign in 2019. Following the commitment from the city as well as the lease agreement, the 44-year lease agreement with the city. Since that time, we've had close to 350 donations that range from $10 to $250,000. So it's been a real commitment and not only that, but we've had interest as well as pledges and. Outright donations from foundations and corporate sponsors. And then as far as the specifics of how we are handling those funds, Mike, can you help me out with this to explain this in the best way possible?
Well, the current funds that we have on hand are in insured accounts, mostly CDs. Probably a majority of those CDs are with East Hampton Savings Bank.
I was hoping that maybe, you know, you had invested in Zoom or something and you had like tripled your.
It would be nice if you could guarantee the return. I'd love to move the money there.
I know.
We're beneficiaries of charitable donations and so we need to be conservative.
Yeah, okay, cool. Thank you, guys.
I'm actually glad to hear the word conservative on that.
I was being snarky, but yeah, no, I get it.
Anybody else? Jamie, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that this appropriation does not actually move the money. From any city controlled accounts. So it's going to stay in the city's. Budgets or the city's. Bank accounts and any interest would accrue to the city and the CPA.
General fund, so to speak.
Okay.
And that's an important thing because the CPA committee. Well, we checked with Val on this. If, once the project is deemed to start and we bond. There still has to be a vote of the city council, not only to bond, but also to move this money into what would be a project construction account. Therefore, then it would be accessible by City Space, but on a reimbursement basis, as I understand it anyway. So there's still another council vote. Before anything happens with the money, but this gives it. It makes sure if this, God forbid, this takes longer than we hope. That future people involved either in City Space or in City Council. Know that this, or CPA committee know that this money is set aside for this project.
Right.
Anybody else from City Space? Raise your hand. You can wave your hand. It's nice to see you all though.
Can I ask another question if no one, is there hand raised? I can't see them all. Just, just from an accounting perspective, Dan, you have 300,000 in historical preservation and 200 in. Undesignated that you're going to move over. All of this is going to move over to historical preservation under?
Yes, the $500,000 if you, let me call that back up.
Oh, to that one, okay. And it'll, but it will be in that column of historical preservation. It'll all move to that.
No, it's in the retained earnings account. It moves from historical preservations into that.
There is no, there's no, okay.
I'm trying to.
You have the headers on the column this way. And one of them is historical preservation. So does that?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to find that again.
If I may. I mean, if you wanted to. So the, the columns are showing where the funds are being drawn from.
Yep.
And what, when the funds move out of those set asides. They'll show on that line item for the retained city match, they'll be.
They'll be all under undesigned.
300,000, sorry, it'll be, yeah, 300,000 in the historic preservation and 450,000 showing on undesigned for a total of 750.
That's just showing where it came from, but it's not really sitting in those buckets necessarily?
Okay. And if for some reason. This project ended up using all those funds, when we took the money back to put it back into the set aside accounts. We'd have to match the percentages. So that way it would be like half would go back to undesigned and half would go back to historical preservation.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
It indeed does, yes.
I just appreciate what Jamie's done here. City match, the 750 is what we end up with once we do it. And we have the 250 right here that we. Established at the budget. So these, these figures, this 200, this 100 and this 200 move into that account. Okay. Any other questions or anybody wants to say anything? So Peg, I think the motion can be that the finance committee would approve the $500,000 appropriation to the Old Town Hall retained city match account. Do you? Agree with that motion?
You want me to second it or do you want me to make the motion?
So moved, you could say?
Okay, so moved.
I second and I have to take a roll call. Val, Peg Coniff?
Yes.
And Risk, yes. So that money has been approved by the finance committee and will be up for. You all should come, especially you Burns, on the. September 2nd is when this is to be a, what do you call, public hearing. And thank you all. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
And what time is that September 2nd meeting?
Six, well, 6:15, 6 o'clock and 6:15 is the public hearing.
Thank you. Normal.
Thanks for the applause, Ed. And Nikki, nice to see you guys. I used to work with them, Peg.
Oh, yes. If you, if you stay, great. Otherwise, if you're leaving, thanks for showing up. It's good to see, good to see you, Burns.
I am going to go to Barbara and the next one, I'm going to try and share that. I've learned something about how to do this. First you call it up on your screen and then I share it. So Barbara, we are dealing, this was also approved in the spring unanimously, the. $9,900 for CPA store for the archival records management survey. So I don't butcher what it is, Barbara. Why don't you go ahead and explain it to Peg?
Well, actually, since. I don't want to butcher it. Basically, we're, we're just trying to get our records in order. And better situation than they currently are. And it's reached the point where. It's really too much for the various departments to do it themselves. So what, what we're hoping to do is get the assistance of a company that's done this in many communities. King Information Systems and Chris Chartran, who is joining us tonight. I'm going to let him give a brief overview on what, what would go on and what things may be affected by the whole COVID situation a bit too. So.
Go ahead, Chris. You have to unmute. There you go.
Thank you, Barbara. Yeah, I'm, I'm with King Information Systems and they're representative. For the company in the western part of Massachusetts. That's Worcester County West and. Personally, you know, we have been doing an enormous amount of this in the past couple of years, but. Effectively, you know, every community reaches a, you know, kind of a, a point where it's, it's now. Impossible for individual departments to. Control just specific areas and, and the basements or attics or some of the. Retention spaces just become overwhelmed with generations of record keeping. And it's, it's important because certainly many of these records are historically vital to the community. Certainly operationally, but, but then additionally, from a regulatory perspective, the state puts a lot of. Rules and regs on what forms these records can take. How they're controlled and protected and having a. Community wide or, you know, citywide, East Hampton having a program that, that. Understands controls and prioritizes these records in the way that they. Are valuable to your community. It takes sometimes really a, a, a. A look at these records from a whole perspective, not just one department. So Barb had, Barbara called me in to do a small evaluation, which is really a tour of, of some of the areas that. Were of concern. And as we did this tour, we were also sort of finding that. Some of the areas had grown even since the last time she had been in the room, which might have been. You know, a month or two previous. So you know, it's, it's an ever fluid process. As well as vastly different from community to community. So. In our tour, I was able to get a scope of that project for East Hampton. And had a detailed conversation then with my. Lead records analyst for the state and we determined that it would take approximately, we, we went to. Six different locations, looked in upwards of 20 plus spaces. And, and East Hampton kind of is, is just like so many other communities of about the same size, just has a unique. Formula of locations and, and size, scope, history, depth. And, and certainly it is really the beginning of this process that we're talking about, which is. Understanding all of the records that you have in those areas for their historical value, their operational value and their regulatory value. And then designing a, a program that would allow you to not only know where those vital records are. But know how to. Apply all of the retention requirements. Make sure you're using the spaces that you have dedicated for records properly. That's the, the byproduct of that analysis in a very detailed report that comes from that with. A host of different. Options that become available for the community to utilize certainly technology, making sure that they're using the, the. The vaulted spaces, whether Old Town Hall and it certainly dovetails into what you were talking about in the upper floors of Old Town Hall. We were in the, some of the lower floors of Old Town Hall and there's an enormous amount of important records down there that are, that are. High priority to the city. So it's, it's, this step is about. The, the time it will take to do a thorough evaluation of all the things you have with those three lenses, as I mentioned. And then a detailed report as to the steps to take from here going forward. Now to Barb's point about the, the COVID situation and how that impacts what this would be. Part of our evaluation was taking a look in some of the operating offices for what records are being stored there. Because some of the record retention locations, basements and other are just, are full. And, and in some cases, a little bit, a little bit chaotic. And so there's a couple of ways to handle that. One, we can reserve some of the time that it would take to do that. Until such time as everybody's comfortable with us. Going into those offices. And, and I realize that there's probably some scheduling elements and, and we are adept at working with. What, what schedules exist within each of the town halls. But holding that time aside and until such time as people are comfortable or. Identifying our schedule in advance so that any of those offices that realize there are things kept. Within our working spaces that really ought to be in a record retention area. They just hadn't gotten there yet because. Of this, that, or the other reason. And, and have those records then included by bringing them down to some of those basement storage spaces for our evaluation. So we're, we're quite good at being able to adjust, being flexible to the schedules of the offices and that I don't suspect. Everyone is in their office every day, all day. As, as per what I'm hearing in, in city and town halls around the, around the state. But certainly either of those options are available as we look at what is the, the right way to get started at this first step.
Chris, I have a question. One of the reasons the CPA and I particularly am very excited about this is. Phase three, which digitizes, microphones all these records, which makes accessibility not only to the staff, but. For the public much easier. And I like that. And so what we're paying for Peg and Omar is phase one right now. That's what we're paying for, correct?
Yeah.
Right. So I'm just curious. If you, if you think you have a ballpark, you won't know the cost of these two phases until you actually do phase one, correct?
Correct, correct. Because there, there certainly will be records that are good candidates for any of those other medias. But until you know what exactly East Hampton has in any of those categories, it's impossible to start identifying what budgets might be.
And some of those records might actually be, how shall I say it? Archival in the sense that not only do we may want to copy them, but we want to protect them. So if we don't lose them, you put them in sleeves or something like that, am I correct?
That's exactly right. There, there are a number of reasons why you evaluate the records and the spaces that, that you keep them in. And that has to do with. You know, being mindful as to what each room offers for protections and, and to my point, when I spoke of vaulted spaces. Those spaces are rated against fires. Those spaces are rated against heat, extreme heat for, for a long periods of time. Paper would not. Be destroyed if, if the building burned down. But then you have other. But then you have other basements which don't offer that same fire protection, but they have some resistance to, you know, kind of being in, in say, a, you know, a, a wooden, you know, shed or something somewhere. And, and trust me, I've, I'm not suggesting that, that any of our walkarounds saw any wooden sheds full of records. But, you know, there are spaces that are more protective to the documents than others. But to your point, Dan, about the Phase Three, when you start to digitize records and your systems become available to, to provide this, now your, your public has access to public record through, either through the website or, or through other mechanisms. And it's not costing staff time to search these records out because they are available in that means.
Okay. Counselor Coniff has questions?
Yeah. So, um, thank you, Chris. That was a helpful explanation. Confining this strictly to Phase One and, and what this will entail, says it's gonna take about twelve days at a certain dollar per hour, dollar per day. Are there, given that we are in the COVID and maybe you've already built it into this estimate, but are there things that, that, what would make this number go up? That you have run across in doing this kind of thing? Is there a risk to, you know, you're gonna open a vault and it's gonna be very different than what you imagined and much harder? Like, how, how firm is this ninety-nine-hundred?
The ninety-nine-hundred is firm. It's quoted. And we have gone so far as to say that, I think we, we looked virtually in all of these spaces. So from a COVID perspective, nothing really changes the spaces. The, except the, the individual who's in one of the offices who may not be comfortable with us coming in, whereby we can reserve that time for a later date when they are comfortable or ask them to take anything that they feel belongs in an archive review and put it into one of the basement spaces. But the, the number is quoted and we have, you know, decided that we would hold those prices even though certainly the, the normal ninety-day period has expired where, where a price would be still valid. We're gonna, we're holding the prices through this, through this stretch of COVID time.
And just from a process point of view, Peg, from a process point, he discovers that he has to get more money. He has, Barb has to come back to the CPA.
No, I get that. Um, so, so Chris, the, the, this'll take twelve days, maybe fourteen days. It'll take whatever it takes. And at the end of that, you owe us a report with recommendations. What's the timeframe between you're done doing your analysis and looking at our physical spaces? What's the timeframe to get that report back?
Usually about four weeks. Yeah, so.
And then is it, I was just gonna say, is there any timeframe then where we have a certain amount of time where we say, yes, we're gonna get the money for Phase Two? Or do you just, is it like, we have a long time to figure out if we wanna take the next step into Phase Two? Is there any time constraints between recommendation and Phase Two?
A- after the presentation is made, there, there's no requirement in any way that you do anything more. We will lay in front of you all the options that we feel have, have positive benefit, benefit impact for the community. And certainly from the perspective of any work that we would suggest would, would come with the fact that we actually employ field people who can go and do these things. And so there's, you know, every one of the recommendations comes fully vetted with, you know, a labor estimate, any type of supply required. But, you know, ultimately what our goal is, is to identify for you a means of controlling all of that data for the city. And you, you can kind of look at that report sort of like an a la carte menu. And, and there will be pieces that, that lay out to that. But certainly, there, there's no time restraint. You're under no requirement for that matter to do anything further.
And it's your team, Chris, that would be doing the Phase Two implementation of the recommendations? Or is it a shared partnership with people from the city and you?
Well, to be perfectly honest, i- it is my folks who are doing a lot of the manual work. We will ask questions because inevitably, as you dig into the layers, you, you know, you find things that are, are kind of sort of custom to how East Hampton did things maybe a couple of generations ago. But for all intents and purposes, we'll do the work with, you know, some, maybe some question and answer period with some of the people that, that have authority over those records.
And Barb, would you be kind of the quote-unquote de facto project manager or person who is driving the doing of this?
Yes, I, that, that would be my plan, working with, with Chris or whoever. We, I would be the key, the key point person.
The one thing I wanted to mention is, Chris, you mentioned that you were gonna study where things are stored and hopefully there's no, like, wooden buildings where things are stored. I'm hoping in your report, you would mention the urgency of either moving or dealing with fire or water damage possibilities in some of our storage places. Cause that would affect the timeline for me anyway, if there's an urgency to any of what you find in that there might be things that are done, that, that need to be done because you're worried about them.
Well, and, and to your, to your point, there are two urgencies that we highlight anytime we, we come across them. One is if we feel that a space is not providing the type of control, the type of security to a record at it ought to. Or two, mold has already begun. Because that then is something that you've got to put an end to right away. You, you can only reverse so much of that. And, and lost records to that are lost. So those, those two elements do get highlighted in their urgency and, and very often help identify as, you know, sometimes this is such a comprehensive project that you take it on in phases, it will sometimes kick part of it to, to the highest priority in, in that there's already damage happening.
Jen, has your hand up, Jen?
Yep, yeah, okay. Hi. Um, well, I just wanted to add to this that when I first came on with the city, I was looking for something and Barbara helped me. And we went downstairs and, and we were looking at, you know, the way that the archives down there are. And so she mentioned that, you know, she was hoping to do something similar to this. And I said, oh, you know, who, are you already working with someone? And she mentioned King Information Systems. And I just want to mention that I had the privilege of working with Chris a lot when I was in the credit union industry. And, um, the process, you know, obviously records are different, but the process is, is the same. You know, I, I worked for a credit union that had opened in nineteen seventy-one and I don't think they had thrown anything away since they started. Chris is laughing. It's true.
It is.
And, uh, and it was, it was really a great, um, a great project because we were able to, you know, through their report, identify where all of the permanent records were and then move them safely to the fireproof vault. And then there, there was also a system put in place so that as we kept getting records, we could easily file them in a way that anyone who went down there could read and, and pull whatever they needed, you know, as far as research goes. So I, um, I highly recommend, you know, this, this process. And King's a great company to work with. They were very, very good about communicating with us. And, and like you said, just asking questions and determining what, you know, what our needs were and, and what we were hoping to get out of, you know, certain parts of the project. So I just want to let you know that it's, it's been proven to be a good, a good system.
Okay. Counselor Gomez, do you have anything you'd like to add or ask? I noticed you there.
No, thanks.
Okay. Mike Taznik?
Yeah, Dan, thanks. I stuck around just to give my support to this request. Some of those records that, that Chris's crew will be looking at are in the Old Town Hall. And, uh, and that, that worries me to some extent only because there's, the security in that building isn't as good as it could, nor the protection of the records. It's not climate-controlled in the basement. And so it would be really appropriate, I think, for the city to move forward with this.
Thank you, Mike. Barb, anything else before we vote on this?
I, I think it's, no, I think we've done good.
I think you have too. Okay.
I will make a motion then, Dan?
Yeah, here it is.
I have it. Uh, I will make a motion that the Finance Committee recommend the approval of the appropriation of nine thousand nine hundred dollars for city archival records and to have an analyst create a servant.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Counselor Coniff?
Yes.
And Dan Res says yes. This again will be on September second. Barbara and Chris, if you could come, you'd be, there might be questions from the other complies. Okay?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna move on to the, uh, the end of your fiscal reports.
And all.
Thank you. And I'm gonna share that screen if I can do this correctly. And I want to say to our staff, Val and Jen, my reason for asking for this is certainly not judgmental. I often get asked questions and I don't want to butcher the answers without trying to get a sense of what all of these figures mean. So as you can see in the screen, I've highlighted some things that I'm gonna ask questions about. And then I'll ask Peg for her same thing. And Val, if you, either one of you can answer the question if, if I, and correct me if I'm wrong. The first question I have is, this is dealing with revenue. And this is the excise tax, the three percent. This is for one business, if I'm correct, INSA. And we obviously budgeted last year a hundred and ten thousand because we weren't sure what that figure would be. So that's why this is that much higher than what we estimated. Am I correct on all that? Yes, just nod your head.
That's a huge, um, did we somewhere in the back of our brain think it would be this number? Or somewhere in the neighborhood of this number? This seems exceptionally high.
The mayor wanted to budget very conservatively, Peg, as I recall. That's why she did this figure. That's what was in the budget as estimated revenue, correct?
First of all, I did the budget and this is my report. And second of all, the Department of Revenue will only let us estimate the amount that we received in the previous fiscal year unless we have some kind of backup to prove we're gonna get more. So we could only estimate what we got last year.
Okay, thank you.
So we had no idea what it was gonna be. And actually, it makes a lot of sense because if you look at the impact fees, which is the same percentage of sales, it's a little higher than this, actually.
Right. Well, good.
And we got what we thought we were gonna get. Okay. That was the next question. This is what you expected. That's what that is. Okay?
That's the money that was turned over to us as, what is it, three percent of their excise sales? Or is it two and a half? I forget.
I think it's three percent. I think you're right.
Yeah. The other number is the money that came from the state as, um, there, three percent of the excise.
Where, where are you, what number are you looking at?
The number at the top.
This number?
Yes. That's the money we get from the state quarterly, excise from the state.
That's seven oh eight?
That's seven oh eight thousand and it's given to us quarterly. It's in arrears, just like the meals tax. So we'll get, you know, say we get third quarter and it's actually for, you know, maybe months, two or three months, you know.
Behind.
Yeah, yeah. So this number, seven oh eight, we're probably gonna be getting, um, say, May and June and July of twenty-one or something like that. I forget what the timing is exactly on it, but, so it won't exactly match the sales on the seven twenty-two.
So is that, is the seven, just because I'm not that smart. So is the seven oh eight, the city and the seven twenty-two is the state or versa vice?
Vice versa.
Or neither?
The seven oh eight, eight one seven is the excise tax the state charges on the marijuana industry. It's our portion that we get from the state quarterly. The seven twenty-two is the check from INSA for their annual sales.
Got it.
So the seven twenty-two is what we're gonna be voting into the marijuana, marijuana impact fee account after free cash is certified.
Okay.
Because that, that impact fee can only be used for what we designate as impacting the city from the sale of cannabis. And we, we passed it. So this year, when we get an impact fee, it goes right into that account. We won't have to do a, a vote. If you recall that thing.
It will no longer be seen in the local receipts.
Okay. So this HHS Care Host Agreement Revenue, can you explain that for me? Val, right here, do you see? I'm circling.
Those two are money we received when they signed the contract with the city and they agreed to give us a certain amount of money upfront for whatever the costs are of setting up or the licensing. It's a one-time thing, although I think one of, a couple of them give us a certain amount annually, too. But yeah, so HHS cares, that's ambulance revenue.
I know. And that comes from the CARES Act? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out.
That's federal money through the state for the ambulance. It's not part of our filing that we do for the CARES Act. It came through a different, a different method. But that money is what goes towards ambulance for the CARES Act. And from what I understand from Dave Mottor, um, you know, it's not, it's not recorded by Coastal Ambulance. It goes to the city. But as a result, Coastal has to charge less for ambulance runs for COVID. But according to Dave, we didn't have a lot of ambulance runs for COVID. So it's, it's kind of like revenue that we receive.
Okay. All right. My next question, most of this is understandable. Can you explain, I know this has to deal with probably our, why is this so high? This figure.
That's the interest on our bonds. It's normally like, you know, a hundred thousand or less. But because we have so much sitting while the Maple School is being built from the bonding, it's giving us a lot of interest.
So if I can understand that, we bonded, I think it was fifty million dollars. And we only pay out what we need to give them when they said, give us a bill, the construction.
Right. As we, as the work is done, we're paying the bills.
Or whatever's left in the bank accounts, that generates interest.
Yes.
So this is incredibly good. So basically, we have one million ninety-seven thousand dollars or one point nine seven. It, it's incredible money to me, but you expected that, right?
Yeah. It'll go down as the project goes on.
I know, but that money is there.
Right.
And can be used to help pay the bills. I mean.
Right. It's invested. I don't know if Jen has it in CDs or what, but it's invested. Yeah.
Is it in CDs, Jen?
I think Melissa set up CDs originally.
Cause I didn't know that was the case and it's, it's incredible to me.
Yep.
So we look at total local receipts. Where we estimated, I'm, I'm trying to understand this. This figure here is that what's over, what, what were you surplus in total local receipts? Behind our estimate?
I had to look at my headers here so I can tell what you're, okay. So.
Over, under, this is all.
Yes. So that's what we have received over and above what we estimated.
Okay, that's.
The total is six million four hundred and forty-nine thousand. We estimated three point six, so we're over by two point eight-ish. Okay.
I got it.
Right. And that happens to some extent every year because we estimate conservatively. And as I said, we can only estimate what we received in the year before. We can't like pump it up. And as I said, we can only estimate what we received in the year before. We can't like pump it up. DOR will not allow us to, so.
Right, okay.
Uh, property taxes, I'm, given that people are out of work, I'm happy to see ninety-eight point nine eight percent. Is this two ninety-three thousand? Is that something that just becomes in arrears, or or is that still to be collected because people are behind? I'm looking at real estate taxes. Do you see it on the screen, Peg, right here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not Peg, I'm in Val.
Okay, so we collected less than we estimated in real estate. It's, I think, it's probably timing.
That's what I meant, it's timing. It may still come in for the last year.
Well, yeah, we're still collecting it next fiscal year. We're still collecting from the previous year until, until we're, you know, it takes us a couple of years to collect it all, but.
Really?
I mean, what we put on the recap is exactly what, what we think we're going to be committing, less our overlay allowance. But what we actually collect is always like ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. But then in the next year, we collect more of it, and usually within two, three years, it's all collected, or it's all gone to tax title. And then we collect it in tax title. If you see down below, tax liens redeemed, those are previous years' taxes that have gone into tax title, and we've collected all that money on that. So that adds to what we've collected in previous years, but.
I get it, very good, okay.
Yeah.
These may become tax.
So it's not like we, we really collected less than we estimated or expected to. It's because you, you're using the number that is going to be committed. We're not using the number we think is really gonna be collected by the end of the fiscal year, but we're still collecting it the next year, and sometimes the next, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes, I do, 'cause this, this explains it a lot. You've redeemed this from last year for sixty-nine thousand.
Or, or other previous years.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
It takes a while to go through tax lien court and all that. Okay, so if I'm reading this correctly, and this is where I wanna make sure I'm right, we have a surplus of two million five hundred and fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Is that a figure that is close to what free cash might be, or am I out of, I'm wrong?
Um, it, well, I know they tell us never give out a number for free cash, because you know, anything can change. You don't know what D R, D O R is gonna do.
I know, I know, ballpark.
And I will say, it's in ballpark. We're gonna have good free cash this year. There are other factors involved. There's all the money that gets turned back from the expenditure accounts that's not encumbered into the next year. I closed out fifty-two thousand seven hundred, fifty-two thousand seven hundred something dollars from the CARES Act into the budget, because that was money that we paid out of the budget for and didn't move it out when the reimbursement came in. So that money all is going into free cash. And anything else that gets closed on the ledger, we had some, we had some deficits, and we'll have a few more. For instance, the ten thousand dollars that got voted in the budget from Williston to go to the school library, they didn't send the check, and then when they finally sent it at the last minute, after the mayor spoke to them, they specified that it was gonna go for training for police and whatever instead of to the library. So we have to take the ten, ten thousand dollar hit for the library. I already worked that in the numbers. Then we had a nine-one-one training grant, things that were disqualified, that we had to take the hit for. But then we got some money from the eight hundred tobacco drug-free grant for admin that gets closed in. So there's a lot of pieces that get added to this and go in and out. Um, but it will be, yeah, it, it's gonna be pretty good free cash, and we're, first thing we wanna do is vote that seven hundred and twenty-two thousand to the impact fee and get it out of there before other things start happening.
All right, makes sense. And unfortunately.
When do we do that?
What?
When would we do that?
As soon as free cash is certified, I'll start the paperwork.
So like October-ish?
Yeah, see, that, it, it may be a little later this year, because I just got the school encumbrances finally today, honest to God. I've been, um, back and forth and back and forth with them since Jul, end of July, to get the right number from them. I got it finally today, so I started, you know, working on the entries for the encumbrances and those things, so I could get a little bit of a look at how things are gonna, are going to look. But we're gonna be in really good shape for the end of this year.
So Enterprise, I didn't highlight this, but this is also an, uh, ballpark retained earnings estimate that might come our way enterprise-wise?
Uh, the two sixty-three.
No, not it.
Oh, general fund, that's a total for general fund.
Oh, that's for both. I'm sorry, the two sixty-three is, right? So they didn't do as well in Enterprise with surplus, but it is a surplus.
No, they didn't, but there wasn't a project that was finished that I closed some money from, and there are other pieces that go in, uh, to, you know, to money that gets turned back from the budget in Enterprise that'll go into the retained earnings number. So that's.
Because all these things are a hundred percent or more. I like that.
Right, right. Yeah, so they made their budget.
That's great.
So that's all my questions on revenue. Peg, do you have any other ones that you, I like?
I think it's a pretty good place to be, given what we've all been through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no problem with it. And one more thing, um, we got, uh, an email from the state on the numbers to use for undesignated fund balance and, uh, chapter seventy. And the undesignated fund balance was exactly what I estimated. And the chapter seventy was about seventeen thousand less than what I estimated. So, so far, you know, depending on how the other areas end up when they give us those numbers, um, our estimates for twenty-one are good, too.
Wow, wow.
That's why I'm doing this. We, we only want good news. So when you have bad news, we won't ask you any questions.
Yeah, that's, that's great, Val, honestly.
The bad news on this is that we have not got gotten our reimbursements from the state for our exemptions, and, uh, according to Lori, everything's been filed. I don't know why the state is so far behind, but also the Medicaid reimbursement is really behind, too. And I don't know what their problem is, but that impacted our local receipts, but we're still in great shape, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we're the only ones that have to pay our bills on time, the state and the federals. They don't have to. Uh, I have no more questions on revenue. Do you have any questions, Peg? Or Omar, do you have any questions on revenue that you'd like to bring up?
No, I do not. I just wanna say thanks to Val. I think that was a great job, and I'm so happy with the numbers.
So we did get a report on receipts, I mean expenses, Peg. I have no questions. It seemed to me.
Can you pull it up, Ann, please?
Do you have any, Peg?
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I wanna see it.
Yeah, just a second.
And I'll tell you if I have questions.
So here it is. I have the, let me break this. I don't know, what, where do you wanna go? Is there a particular account?
No, I just, I just kinda wanted to, um, go through all seventy-three pages. No, um, I just wanted to. I, let me put it this way. Barb and Val, do, Barb, Jen and Val, do you have anything that you wanna call out, or are we in a pretty good place in terms of expense and hitting our numbers on this?
Um, we're in a great place. We, we turned back, um, so, so if you look at, uh, I don't know if you can show the total of the OO one fund, it's, uh.
You know what page it is?
No, I don't.
'Cause there's seventy pages.
Right, right.
Wait, wait, try, Dan, go back to that.
I put it, I put it in the email, the percentage that we had expended. But we're, we're turning back money. I've, I just did the encumbrances today, so, um, I think we encumbered in the general fund. Oh, let's see, there's one million eight thirty-seven six sixty-one eleven from the school, and two hundred and forty-three thousand eight ninety-three in the city encumbrances. So, one eight, yeah, it's about two million encumbered for the city. And then under Enterprise, it's four hundred, about four hundred and eleven thousand. Um, but, so there's still gonna be money turning back that goes towards free cash from the expenditures.
That's great.
I, I'm looking here at the city attorney, 'cause I know we spent a lot of money. It looks like we have a little bit left here. So that budget was accurate, I guess.
Yeah, but if you look at the encumbered, there's nine dollars and eleven cents left.
Oh.
They have a lot of outstanding bills still.
Oh, you did pretty good. Are there, are there bills you still haven't gotten, though, for, that, that you still have to deal with?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Was it more?
A million dollars worth.
Huh?
A million dollars worth.
A bill?
No, 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 not just bills. I mean, uh, a lot of that is school payroll that's encumbered, um, you know, but, yeah, every department has money encumbered for bills they haven't received yet.
But when you showed us our revenue report, you've already taken that into consideration when you tried to figure out where we were.
The revenue has nothing to do with it?
No, but you.
Yeah, when you say that how much money we're getting back?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
You know, encumbrances are just. Okay.
My, my, actually, my, um, let's see if I can find it. I had a fund balance number that I got today, but that may change a little bit. Okay, so at the moment, my, um, what I'm figuring, before I do the rest of the close, the undesignated fund balance is like one million, one ninety-one, nine seven, nine fifty-four. And oh, that's CPA. I don't know, I figured it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be at least two million, maybe two million five by the time I get done.
When you're done, do we get to see, that would be a report, say, in September, where we get to see the final numbers of, or?
I can send out all the reporting, the balance sheets. The thing that happens is when D O R gets my balance sheet, um, they go through it, they only let me accrue what's come in as of September thirtieth, so. And if there's something that they see on there that they don't like, and they'll subtract it out. You know, so that's why they say never really give out a number, because they can change it. Um, but when they send out the free cash notification, um, they will give you, uh, what was subtracted out of it, so you can see. But I mean, when I finish the balance sheet, I can send it to everybody. Um, the free cash paperwork is quite a few pages. There's a lot to it. Um, you know, but I can, I can send you something when I.
Thank you, Jen. This is the, this is the expense, the control report you were looking at, general fund, uh.
Yes, okay, so you'll see, um, it's, this report doesn't show the school encumbrances yet, and, and all the encumbrances aren't showing on it yet. So it's showing an avail, available balance of two, four, twenty-three, six, twenty-two, oh, two. Well, let's take the unexpended. I'll take it and subtract out two, six, 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 four, seventy point two. And I might have some more transfers in and out, but if I take out one, eight, three, seven, six, six, one, eleven, and forty-three, eight ninety-three, two forty-three, eight ninety-three, and eighteen. Okay, so five hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred fifteen ninety-one turned back to the city from this report. I don't know if anything changed after I ran this report.
Well, I, all I'm saying is, in September, you'll probably give us a new expense and revenue report, which might show what has come in since this report. Am I correct on that? And we can look at the numbers at that time.
I can send you my final expenditure report and final revenue report.
That's all I meant.
Yeah, yeah, once I get it, I'm working on the final expenditure report right now.
And once you.
Yeah, I can send those out.
That's what you send to the D O R, right?
That's what I will send to D O R, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions on expenses?
No, I'm, I'm feeling very good right now.
I have to thank you, Val. We're gonna try and, and have this available, so people can ask questions. Again, the reason is, we get asked questions, and we're not auditors. We don't, we don't wanna screw it up. And, uh, also, if we can answer the question, it keeps you from having to get tons of phone calls, so. I, I would like to be able to say what these numbers mean if someone should ask them out. So thank you both very much. Jen, enjoy your birthday party you told me about, so.
Is it your birthday, Peg?
No, 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 it's my daughter's birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, daughter.
My youngest.
Thank you, Val.
She's nine.
We're gonna move on to the second report that I.
Hi, guys, thank you.
Thank you both.
What are we moving on to, Dan?
I just wanna begin the discussion, I don't, on the stipends.
Okay.
That given you. I'm trying to find it. Here it is.
Dan, sorry to interrupt. Can we, in this meeting, 'cause I really would like to have all of us here, um, can we kinda give an overarching view of the rationale that we're even bothering doing this? What you've been through, what I've done, and then we can really crunch the numbers maybe in a future meeting, but maybe lay the foundation.
To do. I've been looking at this for many years, and the one thing we have done is we've given the mayor and the council and the city and, and the, uh, school committee raises. We went up to seventy-five in two thousand seventeen for the mayor, went up to fourteen hundred in two thousand seventeen. I think we went to four thousand a few years ago for the city council. But we've never, this is just me, we've never tried to help the BPW planning assessors and assessors, which in some other cities are paid significantly. My feeling over the years is that these particular boards and committees have a lot of regulatory power. And although we can't pay them a fortune, they should get some respect. I think three hundred dollars a year to the BPW member is kind of insulting. I mean, it's nice that they get something, but, so I made those recommendations just to start us talking about all that. My goal is to, and my reason to get that, the city attorney's opinion on whether we could stagger the payments to the mayor. I was, so Omar knows this, I'm recommending we go to ninety thousand for the mayor, but payable over three years. The city attorney said we could pay the first installment, January first, twenty twenty-two, after the election. But the mayor's position is woefully underfunded, uh, as compared to most others, and I think we should catch up there. And the other thing I did for some, is I multiplied from two thousand seventeen, I think it's, to the end of the term, which is two thousand twenty-six, it's like twenty thousand dollars if you gave the mayor's position three percent per year. So it's not a, an increase that doesn't, that's abnormal. It's something that goes to the kinds of increases we might give any employee. But, all that being said, I'm just starting out this discussion and trying to give some information. Um, I, I really wanna hear what y'all think about, I, I'd like to give these three positions, the planning, these members some, a raise. I think that's something.
Yeah, so Dan, I wanna give a little bit more context to anybody who's listening to this. The, the ability to do this has to happen in the first year of a term, and it does not take effect until January of the following term. So, in this, or in January of the next, by, after the next biennial election. So, if, if we approve any raises for anyone, those positions don't get the raises until the following election, January. So in other words, I don't want people to have the.
Officials, Peg. That's only elected officials.
What did I say?
For anyone. These members.
Who's been elected. Um, I guess that was implied, but, okay, so, um.
Okay.
So, so, I just so want people to believe that, or to think that these raises are being given to any of us right now. We all have to get reelected to get these, and we, uh, we don't get them unless and until that happens. Um, and I also wanna say. And I also want to say that, you know, with the, I also agree that the mayor's position is very underfunded. And I, my concern as we move into the new model with the change to the charter, where we are asking a person who is running for mayor to essentially, if they have a career going on now, we're asking them to put that career on hold for four years. And it was a little different when it was only two years. Like, you can kind of recover from that if you're, you know, if you only want to be a one-term mayor or whatever. But if, if we're going to ask people to step up and attempt to be mayor for four years and not put a raise in right now, then we've missed an opportunity. And the quality of candidates that we might otherwise get, they may say, that's not, that's not enough of an enticement, given perhaps what they already make. Not saying that everybody's making $75,000 today, but, but the position is the chief executive officer of a city and a $50 million budget. And that is not a small thing. And I think we need to consider, especially, Dan has there some other mayoral salaries. We just need to consider that this is a job, and we're going to be recruiting for the job. And we have to make it a job that people want to apply for. So that is the rationale behind that.
Just a couple of things, Peg. Anything we want to do to the assessors, the BPW, or the planning committee has to be done by ordinance. So if we pass that ordinance, they get paid immediately. Unless, we could find out if we could stagger it, but we might say in the ordinance that it can continue for the fiscal year 2022. But an ordinance isn't, I mean, these particular board members, they aren't restricted as the elected officials are. They get paid if we pass the ordinance. And I wanted to say, in my 24 years, we've never done anything for these committees. And I think it's about time. And I want to echo what Peg said about the mayor's position. All of these, these salaries seem high, but there's another factor that you're not even considering. These mayors have considerable staff. We have one and one-half positions staffing the mayor's office. So that has to be considered when you're looking at the workload we're asking our mayor to do. And I, I still think 90,000, if we go that way, is, is not that high either. But I also want to make it possible. The budget is tight, which is why, if we're going to give, I was recommending, I think, well, let me pull that up. So this is where I was. This is just me. I mean, no, I've not talked to anybody about it. I wanted to start the ball rolling. But if we make these increases, like adding $1,000 to the city council president, and I think, given what I know about the presidency, what Peg has gone through, what Joe went through, I think it's about time we did that. And if you remember the other, the other document I put up, a lot of cities do give the president an extra stipend. But if we gave the Board of Public Works members an increase of 3,000 per year, and it stays as a three-member board, that's $9,000. And that's by ordinance, so it would impact the next budget immediately. So that's why I was thinking we would, we could stagger some of this. But I don't know.
You know, I'm sorry, Dan.
Saying this to start the conversation, I didn't want to have to, I don't want to debate it. I think you're right. We need more councillors here. We need, you know, councillor Lynch. I'm just curious what you all think. That's all. Just to start. Omar, go ahead.
Yes, I agree with, with what you guys are saying. I agree with Peg. I think the salary of the, of the mayor now is, is no really, is no really tentative for someone that have a career to run for, for the mayor because of the salary. I agree 100% with that. So the only concern that I have with the, with the documentation that I see in front of me that was, we're comparing the salary of a few mayors. But if you see the population of those cities are super huge compared to East Hampton. Is a way that we're going to compare the salary of the mayors, we see it more like, like, they look like more like us?
I mean, we can do that. I think as we get into the nuts and bolts of this, I agree completely, councillor Gomez. I think we need to normalize the numbers to our statistics. And Dan, if you could pull up that other document as well.
I'm trying to get it up.
The spreadsheet. I agree. I, I think, I think we're going to find that they're also still high. But, but I agree. I think we need that kind of information. I also think, Dan, if you could, pardon me?
I was going to just say that North Adams is a city, and I tried to get that information from them. All I could get from Agawam, which is close to us, is this figure.
Yep.
But I, I, I'm trying to find out about Greenfield. I'm trying to find out about, North Adams has less population than their city, so I'm curious what their figures are.
Yeah. The other thing, Dan, as we're going to represent this number, these numbers, I want to make sure that when we do it, we are apples to apples. So in your column where you've got city council, and you've got all those numbers, I believe, I could be very wrong, are those annual salaries per city council member?
All of these I confirmed. This figure for Edelboro, I did not confirm. I couldn't find it. I was able to get these figures from their budget. But I know that Somerville pays the city council $40,000, because the city president gets 45.
We're all moving to Somerville then. Okay, so, so Dan, Dan, if you could do this, I think this would be helpful when we're starting to talk about a budget. $4,000 is not the number. It would be 36,000, which would, would be what hits the, the budget. So if you could write underneath.
I'm not understanding. You're talking.
I know. Let me explain this. So the line underneath the East Hampton line. You currently have $4,000, right? As the East Hampton city councillors, that's what we make.
That's, that's current, yes.
But if we talk about what is the impact to the city, I'd like to talk about the total dollar amount for city councillors. So in other words, on, if you could create a couple of rows below that that say annually, $36,000 is what would hit the budget. Annually, the school committee would be 1,400 times however many school committee members there are. The assessor, that's $75 a month. So 75 times 12 times however many assessors we have. So that we're looking at today, in salaries for these individuals, all in, it's $125,000. I'm making that number up. If the raises come through that we want, now it's going to be $157,000. Just so we know the difference, I guess.
I will, I will take that on. Just so you know, these are the current figures.
No, I know.
And I'm not proposing an increase in the city council. I may get a pushback on that, but except for the $1,000 increase for the city council president, so.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I can do that. I can put it in this spreadsheet. Our chair's proposed proposals, and then we can see what the total budget.
Yeah, put it, put in, I'd like to see line 39 be current total annual stipends.
And then proposed.
And then below that would be proposed, and then a line that shows the difference.
I'm curious, but I haven't heard from both of you on the, my desire to increase BPW planning and assessors. I'm curious if that's something that you feel is appropriate at this time. Omar?
Definitely. I think the BPW board do a lot of work. They have a lot of responsibility. And I, I think they really deserve a better stipend.
Yeah.
Planning meets twice a week, twice a month. I mean, they have, they're constantly meeting. I, I don't know.
So, okay, so you're suggesting the BPW get a number. But what did you have on your other?
I have 3,000.
3,000?
Per member.
Per member. Wow, 3,000? Is that what you said?
I swear high because you guys are going to cut.
Yes, because I think from 200 to 3,000 is, is a huge jump.
Well, yeah, but let me say something. If you took this figure from 1996, when we started the city council, and multiplied it by 3%, where are you? And the planning board getting no money at all? I don't know. I was impacted by some of these figures here I was getting from certain people. Here, there.
Well, I think.
I just, I just don't know. I don't know. I want to hear.
I don't know. But I, that's the beauty of Excel and why I love it so very much, is that you can create, and we can put in high, medium, and low numbers, and see what it does to the final budget amount, and toggle things and go, okay, 3,000, maybe too much, maybe 1,500 for the first, and the next biennial election, we put in another thousand. I don't know. But similar to the way you want to parse out the mayor, we could do the same thing to the BPW. But I think, you know, with this spreadsheet, we'll be able to do different things, and, and then we'll see it very clearly that if we do nothing, it's zero. If we upgrade a bunch of people, it's a $50,000 hit, or whatever it ends up being.
And ordinances, of course, need to be passed by the mayor. That's important to note. If we decide to increase an elected official, obviously, they're all ordinances, excuse me, never mind. Ordinances which have to be passed through the mayor. And she's going to look at the budget figure and wonder if we can afford it.
But we don't know what the budget's going to look like until next year, so.
I just wanted to put it out there because even at $3,000 a year for the BPW, it doesn't take away, that might be $200 a month. There's still volunteers at that level. They're just getting something that shows.
As are we.
As are we.
I'm kidding. We're elected. But, um.
Well, yeah, but we're not getting paid $40,000 a year.
Yeah, no, I get it. I think the conversation around the how much probably needs to have, you know, maybe Billy here and, and kind of really hash that out. I think the concept and the idea of giving the BPW a raise is, yeah, I'm, I'm all in on that. I'm not all in on your number, so that's why I want to have a conversation with more people. Planning board, I agree as well. I think the amount, that, that, I mean, they're, that's a lot of work, what they do. So I would be interested in seeing what these numbers look like as we start applying real numbers to it and see how things change.
I'm going to try and get more figures from places like North Adams. And Barbara got these figures for us down to here. I got Everett, and I got Braintree, and Agawam, I was only able to get this.
I got some, too, Dan. I just haven't shared them because it's written on a piece of paper, but I'll get them.
Put them into the Excel sheet and send it back to me, because that'll help me.
Yep.
But do, last question. Do we want to bring this up at a meeting on the 26th, which is before the next council meeting? I don't know what our next packet's going to have, so I'm going to call for a meeting on the 26th. We don't have to go into this detail yet, but I think that's what our next meeting will be.
Yeah.
Because we might get stuff in the next council meeting that needs finance work on. Omar?
Thank you. I think it's really important when this committee is going to talk about it, try to invite the, most of the councillors, or all the councillors. So that way, everybody can give their opinion about it. But I think it's really important that everybody should be at that meeting.
Well, let me say something about that. It's frustrating, Omar, because we're dealing with the charter, and the president has mentioned to the council twice how vital that is. And as you know, there are six members of the council that have never seen what we're doing, and only one of them, President Coniff, has showed up. So all we can do is ask, and I certainly will ask them to come, because this is important.
I, I agree 100%.
Our meeting's shorter, a regular meeting, so, I'm sorry, I'm frustrated with that. I think committees are where we get our work done, but, okay.
So, yeah, Dan, I think, I think from a prioritization perspective, certainly if we get some appropriations, we'll have to take care of those first. Then I think this is really important because we're on a ticking clock on this.
Absolutely.
And then I think I really want to start the conversation, you know, before we get too far into the fall around the pilot program. I think Billy needs to present that, and we need to give that some.
That's on the rules committee. That's not a.
Oh, it's not here?
No.
Never mind.
That was a.
And I take it all back.
But you're right, that should have to be talked about.
Okay, my bad.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll move. We adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, councillor Coniff?
Aye.
And I'll say aye. Thank you, Omar, for coming.
And I say aye.
You're not on the committee.
I know.
Your vote doesn't count.
I know.
So, uh, we will have a meeting on the 26th, just to make sure. We, you schedule that, Peg, in.
At 5:30?
Pardon me, 5:30, yes. So 5 o'clock on Zoom, but 5:30 normally. So thank you very much. See you guys later. Have a good evening.
Thanks. See you later. Bye-bye.